2:00 PM, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think I remember. So we have a few announcements before we get started. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio, actually before we get started, did we start the Zoom? It is, okay. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectman's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. And please check the website for any additional events or notices at www.kingstonema.gov. Big announcement, a week from tonight, we have our special town meeting. It will be held next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the Kingston Intermediate School. We have lots of things to discuss, including the big vote on the MBTA zoning, which is, I believe, the first item, so.
And the playground repairs.
And the playground repairs.
I know there's been a lot of buzz about that, too.
Thank you. It shouldn't be a terribly long meeting. It's certainly not as long as our annual town meetings, but it's very, very important, I think, so for folks to be there if they can. I also just wanted to mention that yesterday we had the formal dedication of the Veterans Memorial out front, and that went very well. The Kingston 300 group took a really great photo up on a ladder of a whole bunch of veterans seated and surrounding the memorial, which looked great. We also had a drone covering some of the ceremony, which was nice. And then obviously it was followed by a luncheon over at the Council on Aging. So I think the veterans, it was a special day. It was the 70th anniversary of Veterans Day, which is pretty amazing. So I think everybody had a good time. Any other announcements from anyone else before we move on? Nope, okay. Open forum. Is there anybody here in the room that wanted to speak? Seeing nobody. Do we have anybody online? I don't see anybody up there at all.
Keith needs to be admitted. There we go.
All right. It's just Keith. It's a slow night for us. Nobody wants to watch the hearing on the classification of tax purposes.
They should. They should.
Right. So, moving on to our first appointment, we do have the public hearing for classification of property for tax purposes, so.
Read the public hearing notice.
Yeah, I need to read this hearing notice. So, public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen will hold its annual public hearing on the classifications of property for tax purposes. The selectmen shall first determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2025. During the hearing, the Board of Assessors shall provide all information relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. Based on information provided, the Board of Selectmen shall adopt a residential factor to be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the fiscal year 2025 local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Town House, Room 200, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass.
I move the Board of Selectmen to open the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good to go.
That's good, Keith. Go by. Go to the next page. Yeah, that's just fluff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maureen Clark, and I'm the principal assessor for the town. And every year, we do a classification hearing, which the Mass General Law dictates for us to do. So the first part of it is that in the assessor's office, we get our values approved and certified by the DOR. And once that happens, then we go into the classification. So our values have been certified, and at this point, we're going to look at the different classifications that we have available for the values. So it is, we can grant a discount for open space. We can grant, adopt a residential exemption, and adopt a small commercial exemption. And if we go to the next slide, we'll go over each one a little bit. Okay, open space discount. Currently, there are no possels classified as open space in Kingston. Most of the large landowners participate in chapter land. They'll do either chapter 61, which is forestry, 61A is agricultural, and 61B is recreation in some open space. So that's where the bigger discounts come, if people enroll in those programs. And also, when they enroll in those programs, we put a lien on their house because they'll have to pay, roll back if the circumstances dictate itself. And we have the lien, so we can get back some of the income. Under the open space, that is not an option, and the discount is actually less. It's 25% of the value. Currently, in Massachusetts, there's only one community that has an open space discount, and that's the town of Bedford. The next is the residential exemption, and this is, and just going back a little bit, all the exemptions and the discounts, it doesn't, it just switches to another class. It's not like it's just a discount and we don't have to pay for it. We have the levy. We have to raise that money. So if we're giving one person a discount or an exemption, it's going to go to someone else. So for the residential exemption, what that means is that you can shift the percentage from 1 to 35% to non-resident houses, the people who are not living there. For the Cape and for Boston, that seems to work out pretty well because there are so many second homes and apartment buildings that that makes sense. In Kingston, it doesn't make too much sense. Just a guesstimate, we probably have 400 to 450 non- owner occupied properties, and we have 5,600 properties. So it's such a small amount that if we put the burden on those 450 properties, the discount for the others wouldn't really make much sense either. So the same levy has to be raised by doing this. It's just how you want to apportion it. Just ask, anyone has any questions when we go along? Okay. The smaller commercial exemption is what it says to give small commercial properties a discount on their, exemption on their business. To qualify, you must have occupied the property as of January 1st, have no more than 10 employees, and the building must have a value of less than $1 million. Similar residential tax levy doesn't change. There's a couple of things on this, too, that, I mean, not, there are some bigger businesses that might not be as profitable as some of the smaller businesses, and you're shifting that. It only applies to small commercial properties, not industrial properties. So the small industrial properties that may have, that'll cost their worth is less than a million, have 10 employees. They do not get to participate in it. With the number of commercial properties we have in town, you have to decide if you think that would be worth shifting the value from, going from the higher properties to the small commercial exemption.
And we've not done that before.
We have not done any of these before.
And I can't imagine that we have many commercial properties that are under $1 million anyways. Even homes are pretty expensive.
And it's the landlords that get it. If they're renting, it's someone's renting a property.
Yeah.
The landlord is getting that exemption, not necessarily the business.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So those are the three, as I say, discounts or exemptions that are available to you to decide upon. These next slides are just showing the assessed value of homes and how we have gone up over the years. From 2016 at 331-894 to 2025, $633,409 is our average family home in Kingston right now. So that's just informational for you. The next slide, the same thing, just says your tax rate history. The tax rate, for the most part, has gone down, except for two occasions. It went up a little bit. And this year, it is going up. It's going from $1,271 to $1,297. So that's a little bit of a jump, and the value's going up.
Can I ask a question? So there's been some posts on Facebook from a local Realtor talking about the tax rates amongst our three towns in Silver Lake.
Okay.
Big announcement, a week from tonight, we have our special town meeting. It will be held next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the Kingston Intermediate School. We have lots of things to discuss, including the big vote on the MBTA zoning, which is, I believe, the first item, so.
And the playground repairs.
And the playground repairs.
There's been a lot of buzz about that, too.
Thank you. It shouldn't be a terribly long meeting. It's certainly not as long as our annual town meetings, but it's very, very important, I think, so for folks to be there if they can. I also just wanted to mention that yesterday, we had the formal dedication of the Veterans' Memorial out front, and that went very well. The Kingston 300 group took a really great photo up on a ladder of a whole bunch of veterans seated and surrounding the memorial, which looked great. We also had a drone covering some of the ceremony, which was nice. And then, obviously, it was followed by a luncheon over at the Council on Aging. So I think the veterans, it was a special day. It was the 70th anniversary of Veterans' Day, which is pretty amazing. So I think everybody had a good time. Any other announcements from anyone else before we move on? Nope? Okay. Open forum. Is there anybody here in the room that wanted to speak? Seeing nobody, do we have anybody online? I don't see anybody up there at all.
Keith needs to be admitted. There we go.
All right. It's just Keith. It's a slow night for us. Nobody wants to watch the hearing on the classification of tax purposes.
They should. They should.
Right.
They should want to watch it.
So, moving on to our first appointment, we do have the public hearing for classification of property for tax purposes, so.
I need to read the public hearing notice.
Yeah, I need to read this hearing notice. So, public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen will hold its annual public hearing on the classifications of property for tax purposes. The selectmen shall first determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2025. During the hearing, the Board of Assessors shall provide all information relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. Based on information provided, the Board of Selectmen shall adopt a residential factor to be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the fiscal year 2025 local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Town House, Room 200, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass.
I move the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're good to go.
Go by. Go to the next page.
Can we go to the next page?
Yeah, that's just fluff. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maureen Clark, and I'm the principal assessor for the town. And every year, we do a classification hearing, which the Mass. General Law dictates for us to do. So the first part of it is that, in the assessor's office, we get our values approved and certified by the DOR. And once that happens, then we go into the classification. So our values have been certified, and at this point, we're going to look at the different classifications that we have available for the values. So it is, we can grant a discount for open space, we can grant, adopt a residential exemption, and adopt a small commercial exemption. And if we go to the next slide, we'll go over each one a little bit. Okay, open space discount. Currently, there are no possibles classified as open space in Kingston. Most of the large landowners participate in chapter land. They'll do either chapter 61, which is forestry, 61A is agricultural, and 61B is recreation and some open space. So that's where the bigger discounts come, if people enroll in those programs. And also, when they enroll in those programs, we put a lien on their house because they'll have to pay, roll back if the circumstances dictate itself, and we have the lien, so we can get back some of the income. Under the open space, that is not an option, and the discount is actually less. It's 25% of the value. Currently, in Massachusetts, there's only one community that has an open space discount, and that's the town of Bedford. The next is the residential exemption, and this is, and just going back a little bit, all the exemptions and the discounts, it doesn't, it just switches to another class. It's not like it's just a discount and we don't have to pay for it. We have the levy, we have to raise that money. So if we're giving one person a discount or an exemption, it's going to go to someone else. So for the residential exemption, what that means is that you can shift the percentage from 1 to 35% to non-resident houses, the people who are not living there. For the Cape and for Boston, that seems to work out pretty well because there are so many second homes and apartment buildings that that makes sense. In Kingston, it doesn't make too much sense. Just a guesstimate, we probably have 400 to 450 non-occupied properties, and we have 5,600 properties. So it's such a small amount that if we put the burden on those 450 properties, the discount for the others wouldn't really make much sense either. So, the same levy has to be raised by doing this, it's just how you want to apportion Just ask, anyone has any questions when we go along? The smaller commercial exemption is what it says to give small commercial properties a discount on their, exemption on their business. To qualify, you must have occupied the property as of January 1st, have no more than 10 employees, and the building must have a value of less than $1 million. Similar residential tax levy doesn't change. There's a couple of things on this, too, that, I mean, not, there are some bigger businesses that might not be as profitable as some of the smaller businesses, and you're shifting that. It only applies to small commercial properties, not industrial properties. So the small industrial properties that may have, that'll cost their worth is less than a million, have 10 employees, they do not get to participate in it. With the number of commercial properties we have in town, you have to decide if you think that would be worth shifting the value from, going from the higher properties to the small commercial exemption.
And we've not done that before.
We have not done any of these before.
And I can't imagine that we have many commercial properties that are under $1 million anyways, even homes are pretty expensive.
And it's the landlords that get it, if they're renting, it's, someone's renting a property.
Yeah.
The landlord is getting that exemption, not necessarily the business.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So those are the three, as I say, discounts or exemptions that are available to you to decide upon. These next slides are just showing the assessed value of homes and how we have gone up over the years, from 2016 at $331,894 to, for 2025, $633,409 is our average family home in Kingston right now. So that's just informational for you. The next slide, the same thing, just says your tax rate history. The tax rate, for the most part, has gone down, except for two occasions, it went up a little bit. And this year, it is going up. It's going from $1,271 to $1,297. So that's a little bit of a jump, and with values going up.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So there's been some posts on Facebook from a local Realtor talking about the tax rates amongst our three towns in Silver Lake, and we're definitely the lowest. Doesn't mean that you're paying lower taxes, because it also looks at the assessed values.
Correct.
So we may have higher assessed values than the other two towns, but they have a higher rate. In the end, we're still, we still could be paying more money than somebody else in another town with a higher tax rate, just because of that. I mean, obviously, the same value house would be higher in a higher tax rate, but they don't have.
You can't look just at the tax rate by itself.
Right.
Because that can really vary with assessments. The higher value communities, Steve Duxbury's tax rates.
I think the other thing, too, is, what did that town spend? What did that other town spend?
Oh, actually, would you mind just talking at the microphone just for a sec?
I'm sorry.
So it's online. Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Steve Dunn, and one of the board members. I think the other thing to look at, to take into consideration, I think it's Plimpton and Halifax are the other two communities.
Yep.
Did they have to spend as much money as we did? Because the thing that we're looking at here, at a $1,297 rate, that's the last thing we figured out. We figured out values and whatever we spent money on at town meeting, and what you're going to spend at next week as well. So those are kind of, you know, some of the things that you kind of back into this number.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Yes, we're not necessarily paying more or less than the other towns. And I just wanted to throw this in, too. These numbers are pretty good, but if anything changes at town meeting, the tax rate might change a little bit.
Got it.
I don't foresee anything major, but there is a possibility. Okay, the next, the next sheet is a pie graph of our values. So our total value for all property for this year is $3,413,919,852. That increased approximately 7.2% from last year's levy. But as far as the percentages in this, we're just pretty much right on with our commercial, for our residential, we're 86.88, and last year, we're 86.65. So not much has changed, is the percentage of commercial base we have. And that's something you want to look at when you're deciding whether to have a split rate or not.
And then, the personal property is cars, boats, that sort of thing, am I right?
Yeah, the personal property is that, but the big part of personal property is our utilities, Eversource and National Grid. And that's, that's a big factor in us forecasting new growth, because we don't know what's going to be in the town. It's whatever, all their equipment, January 1st.
Okay.
And last year, our new growth, just from, I think I have that somewhere, just from the utilities, was $810,000.
Yeah, wow.
And this year, we're, you know, we, for our whole personal property, is $300,000. It's such an unknown factor, and it can give us a lot of growth, and I think, or I know that's what happened last year, when we had 1.5 million in new growth, a lot of that came from the utilities company.
Wow.
But other than that, yes, the garages, the equipment in garages, second homes would have what's in there, but it's more kitchens, restaurants, places like that, their property there. And this is just showing you the new growth value for this year in each category. The total residential, we have the growth value, and that will equal out to $371,489 growth dollars. Personal property is $337,980 for growth dollars, and then we have some industrial growth as well. So the total growth for all categories is $767,517. But that's where, as I said, personal properties with the utilities can really make a difference. And this is another slide that shows what our average tax, what our average family, single-family home is, how many new homes we had, which were 17 this year. Goes through the percent change from single families, was like 7.5 in that, condominiums 2.9. The three families went up, two and three went up 13.2%, multifamily 13.6, and so on. But the one thing that is interesting to me, we had one new commercial property in town, and that one commercial property came from an exempt property being converted to commercial, and that was a Hillside Club, which is not bringing us any income at all, really, in commercial value. So there's been no commercial growth, other than a few additions put on the buildings. Any questions? This is just, and I know you probably all know this, but just how we start the process, the first thing we look at is what the levy ceiling is. And the levy ceiling is how much we can go to, is 2.5% of all average values, of all assessed values. So last year, our assessed value was $3,413,919,852, last year meaning 25. So we take 2.5% of that, and that's the number on top. Then, to figure out our maximum levy, we start with last year's levy, we add the, any amended new growth, proposition 2.5 increase, then the new growth from this year, and then we get our levy. So from that levy, you add on the debt exclusion and any other adjustments, if there were overrides or anything like that on the books, that would be there. So our maximum levy is the $45,001,076,552. So that's, being said, that's what we can tax to. The town has decided not to tax to the levy, and we tax into a levy of $44,266,527. Keith, can you go to the next slide? So this is when we determine the tax rate. Put in the levy, and just, the tables will show you what it would be if we had, if we have a single rate, the tax rate's going to be $1,297. If we wanted to shift it all, if you look down the columns for the shift, it will tell you what the residential tax rate would be, and what the commercial, industrial, and personal property would be if we had a split. And this is probably the, one of the biggest ways to look at things and see if that's something you would want to do, is have a split rate this year or not. Last slide, this is just an example this year of what a single-family home, this is an average single-family home, so it won't be the same for everyone. It's the type of home you're in, the type of neighborhood, so the average can be deceiving, but we use it as somewhat of a benchmark to see how much taxes will go up. So from '24 to '25, it looks like the, the tax bill will be $8,215. The value difference between '24 and '25 is $41,969. But the average tax bill difference between '24 and '25 is approximately $698,000. So that's been a little more than we have in the past, and a lot of it has to do with so much less new growth, like we had, and just what we spend. So that's the number. Again, could change a little bit if anything changes at town meeting. So, in summary, the Board of Assessors recommend to have a single rate by adopting a minimal residential factor of one. It's deemed the most, the fairest action to adopt in apportioning the tax bill in Kingston. It produces the same rate for all classes of property. The Board of Assessors does not recommend adoption of the following: open space discount, residential exemption, or small business exemption. And that is it. If there are any questions that anyone has?
You answered my questions as we were going through.
Yep.
But anybody else have a question? No? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
We have to close the public hearing.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
I move the Board of Selectmen to close the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion on the recommendation?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2025 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.0 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Thank you. And as you said, things could change during special town meeting. Do we need, would we need to meet and vote again? No.
Keith or Kathleen can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have any funding coming from any of the articles. They're being funded from other places. There's no raise and appropriate. So I guess it would only change if someone went to amend an article and have money come from raise and appropriate.
So I apologize if I could.
Is that true?
There are items in the warrant that are raised and appropriate. Not huge items, but there are items that are raised and appropriate.
That's right.
So prior year's bills is one of them, which is $9,155, and the other is part of the supplement to the police budget.
I believe that was taken into account, right?
Okay.
Those ones, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, that was. So those were taken into account. It would just be if.
Amendment.
Amended, amended came up, and the residents wanted to change something. Other than that, it would be maybe a couple pennies off and rounding.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for all the work you do. All right. So we're moving on to additional items, and we're going to take, as long as no one objects, I'd like to take number three first, the appointment of the Building Commissioner and Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief. So due to the recent resignations, we have the positions of Building Commissioner and the Assistant to the Fire Chief. Both are vacant. After completing the recruitment process, the town administrators recommending that the board authorize the hiring of David Kulikowski, did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, good.
Close enough.
To the position of Building Commissioner. And then, the Fire Department has completed the recruiting process for the Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief, and Chief Douglas is recommending the hiring of Colleen Chase to the position of Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief. Keith, did you want to say anything before we take a vote?
Excuse me, yeah, if I could, David is here tonight. He stopped in to fill out his paperwork and took it upon himself to stay for the meeting. David comes from Rockland and Norton as their local building inspector. He holds a business in, I'm sorry, BS and MS in construction management from the Wentworth Institute of Technology, and he is nearly through the process of becoming a Building Commissioner. So we're thrilled to have him come. He's going to start on December 8th, 9th. He's going to start in early December, and we're thrilled to have him. I think he's going to be a great addition to the team.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Any questions or a motion?
I want to know, how do you actually pronounce your last name? How do you pronounce your last name?
Kulikowski.
Kulikowski, okay. Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen appoint David Kulikowski to the position of Building Commissioner with an anticipated start date of December 9, 2024, grade 11, step 2 of the Wage and Personnel Bill law, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Welcome to the team. And I'll do the next one?
Sure.
All right. I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Colleen Chase to the position of Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief, grade 5, step 8 position with the Kingston Town Employee Union clerical with an anticipated start date of November 13, 2024, consistent with the terms in the offer letter.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good thing, because she starts tomorrow.
Good. All right. Now, we're going to go backwards, up to number one, update to the Director of Elder Affairs job description. Keith, do you want to take this?
Sure. Thank you. After the resignation of the Director of Elder Affairs, I think I had a couple of offline conversations with board members, talking about whether or not there was an interest in modifying the job description to potentially include a different type of department head position that would oversee both the Recreation Department and the Elder Affairs Council on Aging. Spoke to the Recreation Director about whether or not she thinks there would be the capability of either position having the responsibilities of both departments. I also looked at what other, what other communities in Massachusetts are doing. Some of the larger communities do have a joint position, but communities the size of Kingston doesn't. So I really feel like the Council on Aging Director position should remain as a department head position, working independently from the Recreation Department and keeping the organizational chart as it remains, as it exists today, excuse me, with regards to the Recreation and Council on Aging Director. And wanted to just have that conversation with the board to make sure everybody's on the same page before we advertise the position and get started with the recruitment process. So wanted to bring that to the board's attention and try to get some consensus from the board on how to move forward.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I've heard this, over the years, come up several times. I think it's a, probably a bigger discussion than just one-off conversation. I'm not saying we should hold off hiring. I think we should, but if it's, in my mind, it's similar to what we're talking about with the DPW. We're talking about a reorganization of several departments. I don't think it's a one-off conversation. I think at some point, we should talk about that at a deeper level, whether that makes sense, whether we need to look at that in terms of the structure when we're thinking about how this town operates as an organization. Is this something that potentially could make sense? Maybe, I don't know. Is it right now? No, I don't think it's right now. But I do think it's something we should talk about, look at, think about for any of our departments, this one in particular.
I agree. And I think, so this year, we're going to have some budget issues, challenges, but we will for the next couple of years, as we all know, because water moratorium, really lack of development, so we're going to have to take a closer look at government efficiencies and ways that we can consolidate, not only to make, necessarily to save money, but just to be more efficient as well, so.
The state could help us a little bit, too, with unfunded mandates and all of the things, so they haven't really helped with the prices and just.
That's true.
If we're going to go, if we're going to go, you know what I mean?
Right.
I'm with you on the water, but I'm also, I'd say our state has been hostile in a lot of ways, and they're not helping us. They're hurting us, so anyways, sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine, that's fine. Anything else? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
So is it being amended or not amended?
So not amended.
I move the Board of Selectmen not amend the current job description, request the town administrator begin the hiring process for the Director of Elder Affairs.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right. Next one, acceptance of donation. The Council on Aging received and is requesting the board accept a donation of $25 from Robert Melody Tassinari.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of $25 from Robert Melody Tassinari to the Council on Aging.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you so much for your donation.
Yes. All right. Could you believe we're on our last item? Number four, amendment to declaration of trust. So we had, the declaration of trust has already been signed by the Board of Selectmen. It had not been recorded with the Registry of Deed, so the Affordable Housing Trust is requesting that the trust be amended to include the trust's newly appointed member that we did, I believe, at our last meeting. The Affordable Housing Trust has voted on the amendment at their meeting on Thursday, November 7, which I was, I was there, so we just need to take a vote on that. So we just need to take a vote on that.
I move, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the amendment of the declaration of trust to include Affordable Housing Trust member Nicholas, is it LaJoy?
LaJoy.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. We're good. We also have meeting minutes, approval of September 24th, October 8th, and October 30th.
Can we hold the 8th? I have some questions on that one.
Yeah, so if, if you want to make a motion to approve the other two?
Sure. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes of September 24th, 2024, and October 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Tricia, could you just make a note to put that on the next meeting agenda?
Thank you.
October 8th. All right, town administrator report. You are up, Keith.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just to make the board aware that documents for the fiscal '26 capital improvement plan have been distributed to department heads. Those, those requests are due back in early December. I had a department head meeting this morning. We talked about the fiscal '26 budget. Our finance director will be, will be distributing budget information in the next couple of weeks. The department heads to get back sometime in the middle of December. Valerie and I, Valerie Masard and I will be having a second meeting with representatives from the Country Club Way subdivision to discuss, further discuss a process to have their roads considered for acceptance by the town. I've met with a vendor to offer some software for a variety of online permitting to provide customers a more convenient and efficient way to do business with the town. The software demonstration was provided to members of all departments that could take advantage of the online permitting option. Permitting will be offered for transfer station decals, business permits, alcohol license renewals, building permits, health permits, beach permits, and other types of things. Trying to, try to finalize, putting this together, I think it's something that we are, Kingston is significantly lacking compared to some of the other communities, trying to allow people to do their town business online versus having to actually come into the, into, into a building to do some, some of their business. So we're continuing to work on that. The, the first stage of the Blackwater Memorial Forest, which is the Carlson Boggs off of Winthrop Street, has begun with the rest, with the wetland restoration. They'll be, they'll be cutting some trees between trails and doing a tremendous amount of preliminary maintenance to, to get those, those trails up and running and having that be a more functional, better utilized conservation area moving forward in the future. The second phase is out to bid now. Bids are expected back December 2nd, with work to be completed by the middle of March. And lastly, the, the pump house and the shed and the property, we removed and installation of a, of two timber framed lay down pedestrian bridges where the culverts are now will be installed. So Matt Pennell's been doing a lot of work on that. It's, it's been nice to see and hopefully that, that property will be a better opportunity for people to get out and do some passive recreation. Not a lot, no, no personnel updates. DPW, the DPW Working Group met last, on November 5th, I guess, last week for the first time. There was some, some takeaways for us to do some, to do some homework on, and we're doing that. With regards to organizational structure, the next meeting is going to be held during the last week in November, so that's moving forward. Want to thank our town clerk, Paul Gallagher, his assistant clerk, Jenna Morrissey, administrative assistant Andrea Cunningham, and all the election staff workers for a really, really, really good job on Election Day. Election Day went without any issues, any hiccups, any problems, and took a lot of work on their behalf and want to thank them very, very much for their, for their efforts. Lastly, we had a tremendous turnout yesterday for our veterans' celebration because of, I was out of town, couldn't attend, and we had some other challenges we had to face. Our facilities administrator, who's, who's worked over there on previous Veterans Day events, Melissa Russell, really took the, took the reins and did a great job, along with assistant town clerk Jenna Morrissey, our, our two recently retired veterans agents, Dan Forbes and Priscilla Brackett, also Linda Regusto and, and the cook over at the Council on Aging, Phil Warner, for their efforts on the luncheon. It was a tremendous effort. Also want to shout out a big thank you to State Representative Kathy Lanatra and Stacy Landry for their coordination and work with the Silver Lake Student Volunteers. And lastly, and I think as importantly, this year, Mark Beaton, who owns the Charlie Horse and Plymouth Bay Catering, donated 140 meals to the town for the veterans' luncheon. So we had some challenges to, to get through for yesterday's veterans' lunch. And again, it just shows when, when some of the challenges are faced, everybody pulls together in Kingston, it really comes together and does a great job. And I think yesterday was a, a prime example of how good Kingston rallies together to, to make something happen. And want to thank everybody very, very much for their help and support. It was a good day. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Wow, all right. Any Selectmen comments?
Yeah, I just have one quick thing. And this shows the, the kind of us being still a bit of a rural, rural town and area, a lot of conservation woods and private land, is deer hunting season and also the rut, which is mating season's in, in play right now. And if you've noticed, there's been a lot more accidents on the streets because during that time period, they are trying to mate and they run through a lot at night. And it's actually, a friend of mine just got, got an accident the other day and I said this is what happens every year. So I think it's just a good thing to remember, like especially at night and those early mornings and dusk, and it can happen anytime, but they are running a lot, they're awake a lot. And also, it's bow hunting season right now. I've also seen some people on Facebook kind of talking about seeing people out in the woods and stuff like that. It's, you know, just one of those things we've been doing for a couple thousand years. But bow hunting is still in, in play. And then gun season for, for deer hunting will start the Monday after Thanksgiving, although if you're hearing shots out in waterways and in the ocean, that can be from duck hunting. So just been hearing, seen more comments on Facebook and stuff like that. I think it's good for people to know.
So wear orange.
Yeah, it's good, even, I mean, bow hunting is, you know, it's, there's very few accidents with bow hunters. They're very safe because you have to shoot very close and with that. With gun hunters too, but I think at this time of year, if you're in the woods, it's great to wear bright colors, especially orange. In conservation land in Kingston, for the most part, almost all of it is huntable. So it's just, I think it's, I mean, that's what we do. I'm a hunter. We, if we go in the woods for a walk, even on Sunday, just to be smart, you know, Sunday's, Sunday's closed for hunting, although it shouldn't be, but it is. If we take a walk for the kids, with the kids in the woods, you know, we're wearing orange. And so it's just a good practice to have. And that will commence in, in January 1st, but in a few more weeks, we'll probably be making the announcement again and until the end, just so people are aware.
Excellent.
Watch out for the deer.
Thank you, good advice.
Did OCPC end up picking their representative for our area?
I don't know where that person would be. Yeah, they picked me. So my first meeting will be, the Old Colony Planning will be the same day as town meeting, but in the middle of the day.
Okay. And you're representing how many communities as a, that representative? Like quite a few, right?
I think it's nine, nine or 10.
Okay. Yeah, so, just so that everyone knows, Tanner was selected, we nominated him the other day and he got picked, so.
Thanks for that.
So congrats.
Appreciate it.
I'm sure he'll be a great representative. I didn't have anything. I was going to thank the, the poll workers and there was a 75, I think it was 75% turnout overall for a town with 11,000 voters. It was something like, I forget, 8,000 something between early voting, in-person, and mail-in, so.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it was, there was a lot of work involved in that and I appreciate all of their efforts and the time. I think it was a 20-hour day that they ended up pretty much putting in, so.
Big discussion.
No easy feat, so appreciate that. And town meeting next Tuesday. Please come, please vote. MBTA zoning, playground repairs, things you care about, things that matter.
The only thing for me is just looking for feedback from the public and the board on the new weekly newsletter, community reader. So anything, and I don't know if we want to have something on a future agenda, if there's things to discuss, I'm not really sure, but going to try to do that weekly on Sundays, so.
Thank you for doing that. That's, it's great.
It's great, yeah. When do you need stuff from us, like Thursday?
I mean, technically by Sunday, but I, I let the, I let the department heads know Thursday so that they get me stuff Friday. But yeah, anything until Saturday night.
Okay.
And then I cut you off, Alexa.
Well, that's great. Thank you for doing that.
Missy, anything from you?
I, it's a little early, but luminary's December 21st.
Oh, right.
What day is it again?
The 21st, so it's always the Saturday before the holiday.
Got it. Okay. All right. Let them make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.